All right, we're ready. Can I have a motion to go back into public session?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. Good evening. Welcome to the Yorktown Central School District Board of Education meeting for December 7th, 2020. Would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence for armed forces. And those are our community of lost loved ones, especially the father of Barbara Disco and Dorothy Abruzzi, who was a retired employee, and the mother of Steve and Anthony Abruzzi. A pledge of allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, good evening, everyone. We're going to start with public comment on agenda items. Evette, did anybody send anything in?
No, I didn't receive anything.
Okay, so we're going to go right to Dr. Hatter's report.
Good evening, everyone. It's wonderful to be with you tonight, December 7th. I'll begin for, I just first want to begin by saying thank yous, a few thank yous to our board. You don't get a lot of public acknowledgement. You do a lot of the work behind the scenes, but you don't get a lot of the public thanks. And I just want to say thank you because operating a school district in this type of climate isn't easy and governing a school district and then overseeing the policies and the fiduciary component is just such a heavy lift. And I thank you for what you're doing. I really want to acknowledge my central administration team, Lisa, Tom, and Mike. I want to acknowledge the building administrators for all of their work. It's when you get a COVID call at 7:00 PM on a Sunday night and you have to begin the process of determining whether you can open schools or not. There's just a profound and inspiring commitment that it takes to go through the process at all hours of the night. I want to thank our faculty and staff. The back and forth, open, close, remote learning, hybrid, in-person today is not easy. And our faculty and staff have just been absolutely remarkable in every single interaction. They're professionals. They're committed to our students. They are committed to the well-being of our students. And I'm really impressed by the work that our faculty and staff have done. Our students have been remarkable. Our students have been so flexible. It's not easy for them either. The children want to be in school. They're very clear that they want to be in school consistently. The children want to be in school, and we understand the disruptions that are caused when we do have to close schools. But please understand that all of those decisions are made out of our commitment to health and safety for our students, faculty, and staff. Our parents, I want to acknowledge the parents in the community because this is not easy. This is challenging. You get a call that your child's school is closed in just a few hours. The school's closed. And now there's a scramble, the natural scramble that happens to find childcare and to go through the process of making sure the children are able to access the remote learning and all of the impacts that that has, that a school closure has. So I really thank our parent community as well. And one person on this call who I also want to thank, Dr. Corsaro, and I want to acknowledge him publicly. He is the best medical director, best doctor that I've met and that I know. Dr. Corsaro, when I speak more than I care to admit, I've learned a lot from him. I don't have a degree in medicine, but I'm a pretty quick study and he's a great teacher. So I invited Dr. Corsaro onto this call to be able to do a few things. First of all, I'd like you to hear from him what he's seeing. Dr. Corsaro is very highly regarded in medicine and he's really involved in a lot of school districts and has a really prominent presence, especially in the Putnam Northern Westchester region. You'll also have the opportunity to ask Dr. Corsaro some questions and hear his take. And Dr. Corsaro can explain to you some of the things he's seeing, but he always has a way of framing things for me that get me to see the bright side. And that in spite of the difficult work and the challenges that are ahead, you'll hear Dr. Corsaro share. Well, Dr. Hatter even in the craziness, 92, 93, 94 out of 100 people are testing negative. So I understand that you're only getting the calls on the positives, but there are 93, 94 out of 100 people who are getting tested who will test negative. And there are other illnesses that are out there. So Dr. Corsaro has such a great balance of understanding the educational needs of our children while also recognizing the reality of the health landscape. So Dr. Corsaro, first of all, thank you for making the time to join us this evening. I know how busy you are and for you to give up your time, I thank you.
It's my pleasure to help.
So Dr. Corsaro, and by the way, when Tom retires, we're going to have Dr. Corsaro do the snow calls because you'll see the parallels there. So, but Tom's not going anywhere. I don't want to put the, Tom's going to stay with us a long time. Tom actually said that he and I are going to retire together. So we're excited by that.
But that's actually untrue.
I figured I'd try. But Dr. Corsaro, thank you so much. I do appreciate you being here. And I'll turn it over to you. And if you just kindly provide the board with an update on what you're seeing and some of the experiences that you've had across the many districts that you work with, I would appreciate that update.
Let me explain first of all, what my background is. I'm a pediatrician. And I've spent 45 years of my life in the office seeing children. I'm also the father of six children and two stepdaughters and have 15 grandchildren. So I'm vested in childcare and education. My wife's a retired teacher. So I've lived the life of being someone responsive to schools and understanding their needs. I've also gotten 37 years of experience consulting to special education within the John Jay School District. So it's been a long-term hobby of mine, working with special ed particularly. And with my past background of nine of my grandchildren playing lacrosse and two of my own children playing lacrosse in college, I vested in athletics in addition. And during this very troubling period, I've tried to find the bright side. I do know that there's light at the end of the tunnel. And I'm hopeful that if everything goes well and if vaccines hit the market and everybody is accepting, that next September is going to be an entirely different paradigm of education. And I'm hoping that we can get our children back into school full-time or close to full-time, you know, as the fall approaches. But what we're seeing today is an upswing of COVID disease. And Dr. Fauci predicted it that after Thanksgiving, we were going to see an uptick. However, he also is saying today that he's more concerned about the period following the Christmas holiday. My personal preference is to keep schools open and to work within the school districts that I service to keep a school open and to quarantine where it's necessary, keeping everybody safe, but not necessarily to close a school. We've had to close schools for one or two days or longer where it was necessary for contact tracing to occur. But that's where the surgical intervention occurs here, where we sort out who has potentially been exposed, who needs to be quarantined for their health and safety until we're satisfied that they're not harboring active disease. And then to get them back into school and to keep going with an ongoing education. I've worked very hard with the districts I service to try to sort out where staff needs to be placed on remote teaching status and where we can provide PPE safeguards within the school for their health and safety. The one major message to remember is that this is an adult disease. It's not a children's disease by and large. Certainly for youngsters 12 and under, we see very few children with active infection, although it does occur. It's not in proportion to the general population. So my charge is really to protect the adults in the room, my teachers, my administrators, my bus drivers, my cafeteria workers, the aides that run the school. I have to keep their health and safety foremost. And considering that community-acquired disease is the way this disease is propagated, the schools themselves can be made safe, but we have to continue with all the mitigating factors that we've put in place. And we can't let down any one of those factors. When put together, all of them will create a protective barrier to make schools safe and make the educational process continue. Now, how can I address issues that people are concerned about?
So, Doctor, some of the questions, and certainly the board, I'll start, but some of the questions that I'm sure are on the minds of people within the community and some things that you and I have actively discussed. We certainly want to keep schools open. And I think as of late, we've heard the governor and we've seen different reports of testing where you're hearing schools are safe, schools are safe. And the natural response that I'm getting is can we return to full day, every day, get rid of the social distancing so that we can bring all of our students back every day? Now, one of the things, obviously, we're not in a place to do that at this point, but I'm wondering what your response is to that and what your thoughts are on that.
The safeguards that we put in place are working. However, if you take away those safeguards, we're going to let disease enter the school district. We have to protect our staff. We have to protect the teachers. And if we don't continue to enforce using face masks, practicing social distancing, limiting class size, these are all the mitigating factors that have contributed to why we have such a low rate of infection within these schools. Nationwide, the infection rate within schools has been reported at 0.17%. Recently, New York City has, you know, has shown that they've had a slight increase over that number, but their numbers are below 0.3%. So it's still much less than the 6% and 7% that we're seeing in the community at large. So by continuing to practice all of the mitigating factors that we have in place and not dropping a beat, we're able to continue to, you know, keep that protective barrier going. Any one of those, if we were to step back, if we would allow more children into a classroom, then the potential for disease transmission starts to increase substantially.
Thank you for that, Doc. Do any of the board trustees want, Lisa, I see that you have a question for me?
I do. Dr. Corsaro, thank you for joining us and thank you for everything that you have been doing to help us out through this pandemic. I have a question, and I think it's something that I know I have been struggling with. And I think the other board members have been struggling with. And that is weighing the benefit of keeping the schools open so that the kids can go to school for the kids who want to go to school versus, for example, the problem we're having with the high school, with the school closing down because of COVID exposures and the kids being home and then going in and that inconsistency that we're having with the kids having to stay home. What are your thoughts on just shutting it down until we can get through this versus that on again, off again, that we're seeing happen?
I think this is the problem that we all have and are suffering with. I asked this question of a nine-year-old grandson yesterday. And he said, I want to go to school. I want to be there. I said, what about the fact that you're going to go virtual for the next two weeks? Because his school in Connecticut has now announced that they're going to continue virtual teaching until the holidays. He says, I miss seeing my friends. I miss being with my teacher. I miss the facial contact with my teacher. It's very, very important and helps me learn. So even if we have to open and close the schools, if we can have the most amount of face-to-face contact with a teacher, the educational process will, you know, will progress, you know, better than just staying entirely virtual. There may come a point where going entirely virtual is going to be necessary. And over the next six months, I can't predict what's going to happen, you know, with the infectious disease rate. And we may ultimately end up doing that, you know, for relatively short periods of time until we see enough vaccination being administered in the community and our herd immunity start to get up beyond the 70%, you know, percentage. However, to answer your question, I'd rather see a stop and start than just totally closing down. Now, we have to also differentiate who benefits the most and who is most at risk. For youngsters under age 12, we should make every effort to keep the schools open as much as we can. For youngsters over age 12, because of community-acquired experiences, their infectivity rate is going to be substantially higher and their transmission ability to propagate disease is like an adult. So for the younger kids, we should make every effort to keep the schools open. For high schoolers, it may be problematic. And just experiences that I've been involved with in the community where a party of 100 youngsters will result in a school closure. And this is happening on a regular basis. Over the Thanksgiving holiday, we've heard of stories where youngsters went to Cape Cod and took over a house, 10 youngsters in one household, and this resulted in infection. Other parties, there was one that involved 25 youngsters from two different districts. One district was able to get away with only two infections. The other district literally had to close the high school. So if we can contain the community-acquired spread, we can minimize the amount of school closures. This is all community-acquired. And if we can contain that, if we can contain lifestyle as hard as it is, then we can keep the schools open. And my dread is that during the Christmas holiday, where the guards are going to be let down and this is where disease is going to spread in that timeframe after the Christmas holiday. I'm fearful that perhaps that first or second week after that time, we should plan on keeping the schools closed just so we can sort out the infectivity rate. If we don't do that, then we're liable to have more need for large numbers of quarantining. And if we can keep the schools closed, we can sort out the infection rate, we won't have to make that effort to close the school on a stop-and-start basis.
And I just want to point out that the doctor works with a lot of schools and a lot of districts. All the examples that he cited of parties are not necessarily Yorktown. So I just want to share.
No, I'm talking about the general community because I service 12 districts in Putnam and in Northern Westchester. So I know what's going on in each one of these districts because I get the calls. And it's all one collective class of students. They all do similar things. They all want to party. And with kids coming home from college, this has been an increase, the problem. I have a daughter who's away at college and she's in an apartment being taught virtually. And we're dealing with the depressive effects of that. You know, of someone sitting in an apartment with a virtual college experience, not able to party and not able to socialize. And that in itself is extremely problematic.
I have a question.
Yes.
So I understand, it's my understanding that none of the cases that we've had within our schools have actually happened in our schools. How do we get the message out to the community that their bad behaviors and they're not following the rules is what's affecting our abilities to keep our schools open? Because, you know, we didn't tell kids to go away. We didn't have parties at 25. We didn't sanction any of this. But the effect on our school is that now we have to close and it affects our students. And so we've tried to get the message out. I just don't know how to get people to understand that.
Before the doctor gives his answer, and his answer will be far more articulate and medically based than mine, I will share that many of the cases within our district are the result of a parent contracting the disease at work. And then with the propensity of, and propensity to spread, it just goes through the household. The virus goes through the household. So I will share that the vast majority of people are following the rules and they are being respectful of what we're asking them to do to keep the schools open. But we do have families who are first responders, who work in healthcare facilities, who are medical professionals, frontline workers. They contract the disease at their place of employment and it comes home. And unfortunately, it's spread to the rest of the family. But there are some behaviors, certainly, I will acknowledge that 100%.
You want to be a Pollyanna around, but the reality is, is that's not, it's the bad behavior that's creating issues for us. And we need to say it out loud. It's a problem. Mike said it last time, but I'll say it again. We need to figure out how to get the message out that the bad behaviors is not going to help us keep school open.
I agree entirely. And this is why I'm on tonight's webinar with you all. And I speak very frequently to other districts about the same topic. It's an adult disease with adult transmission with children involved. And even something as simple as a three-year-old's birthday party in another district, I'll have to qualify this. There was 25 of my students from one district, you know, who was involved with this three-year-old's birthday party. So that the number of quarantining went into the hundreds that we had to do. And it's something as benign as a birthday party can cause the spread of infection. You just have to be in a room with multiple people. If one of those people have infection, they may be asymptomatic. And you're in that space, you're breathing the same air for 10 or more minutes. There's a likely transmission of infection. So it's a subtle process, Ms. Carbon. It's not overt. I mean, the big parties are a no-no, and we really need to get that message out there. But the subtlety of disease transmission is very nuanced. And you just have to recognize that there is a disease there. You can't deny it. You have to readjust your lifestyle as hard as it might be.
Rashmi? Good evening, Doc. Thank you for joining us tonight. So I have a question about the guidelines that are suggested or recommended by the CDC versus what we see locally in terms of the quarantine time with testing, without testing. How do we reconcile the two or what's your view on that?
There's a very simple answer. We answer to the New York State Department of Education and New York State Department of Health. And until they make a change in the guidelines, we have to continue with our old guidance. Yes, I agree that CDC has made that statement. I'm not sure whether that statement was made from scientific basis or whether it was politically motivated. However, we have to, we're obligated to function under the guidelines of New York State Department of Health. And as of this minute, they have not changed their stand on the quarantine issue. So we're obligated to follow that directive.
Thank you.
Mike, did you have any?
I do have a question. Thank you for joining us, Dr. Corsaro. Can you speak to the role that testing plays here in helping us? As Rashmi mentioned, you know, some things have changed. I know the governor has said if you travel and you stay home or get tested before you come home and get tested after you come home, it's okay. Can you just talk to a little bit about what your experience is and how effective testing is in sorting out who we should be around?
Those are multiple questions. Okay, let's take it. No, I'm serious. And they're really good questions. And I love to address it. Let's start with traveling out of state. If you travel to a non-contiguous state, particularly an area where there's a high frequency of disease and you're there for more than 24 hours and you're within the public domain, you're going to, for instance, a hockey tournament, which is my favorite source of contacting disease. If you're going to a funeral, you know, for deceased relative, you have that exposure. So that on return, the guidance has been 14 days of quarantine so that you're sure that you do not show signs of infection before returning to particularly a school district. Recently, the governor has issued guidance to shorten that period of time to return. And the guidance was you have to test three days prior to departing. And when you return, quarantine for three days and on the morning of the fourth day, get tested. And if you have two negative tests, two negative antigen tests, it doesn't have to be PCR. So you'll get an answer relatively rapidly. Then you can return to your workplace or your school district. So those are the guidelines that the governor has put in place. He also said that if you travel out of the state for less than 24 hours, you can return without having to do these steps. I'm concerned about that because if you're traveling out of state and particularly going to a cheerleading tournament or again, a hockey tournament, and you're within a building and you're exposed to multiple people, you have more than ample opportunity of, you know, acquiring disease. So that even if you were to be tested on the morning of the fourth day upon your return, it still doesn't rule out that you aren't going to come down with disease. So it depends on where you're going, what the infectivity rate is in the area you're going, how secure you are and the people that you're traveling with. And when you consider that there's probably two or three times the amount of infection that's really being reported. And this is what physicians are telling me, the ones who are out in the field, seeing patients on a day-to-day basis. We have to just assume that everybody you're in contact with is potentially infected outside of your initial cocoon. So that if you take these precautions, you're not going to bring the disease back to your place of employment or expose your children to infection. And the major infections that we've seen of children have been with coaches, you know, who inadvertently are asymptomatic spreaders of disease. You know, they're just not aware of it. And that's where we can trace back from an infection from an elementary school student. We can trace it back. So contact tracing does help identify the source of infection. And it allows us to quarantine those people so that you don't continue to spread it to other people. So contact tracing is helpful. Now, when we talk about, you know, testing in large as a generic term, we test the general population. You test anybody who's symptomatic. True testing is when you test the entire population on a random basis, not just the sick people, not just the students in school. And that's where you get the most amount of information as to how prevalent, you know, the infectivity rate is in the community. But the question of testing within schools, this has been the most recent issue. If the governor decides that he's going to declare a zone within your school district, for instance, if he's decided that our zip code is a yellow zone, which means that there's been more infection than there really should be, or micro clusters in that area, there's going to be a compliance issue where we have to test in order to keep the schools open. If the infectivity rate is substantially higher and he declares that there's an orange or a red zone, this means that there's a higher level of infectivity in that community. And then we'll be obligated to test within the schools in order to stay open. And this is what Dr. Hatter and I have been working on. And I worked with all of the surrounding districts to prepare for that eventuality as to how we're going to do this, whether we're going to test in school, whether we're going to partner with outside agencies to provide the testing for us. That's a decision. That's a decision that each district has to make on a personal basis. And depending on availability of funds and having staff to carry this out, ultimately, testing within the schools would be helpful. Right now, we haven't gotten to that point where it's necessary. The colleges are doing a really good job about this. And the one example that I can cite, because I have personal experience, is Cornell University, where my stepdaughter is tested three times a week. Even though she's living off campus in an apartment, she's being tested mandatorily three times a week. She had to sign a contract with the school that said that if she partied, if she was involved with partying in her apartment with 10 or more kids, she would be disqualified for that semester at school and she would lose her tuition for that semester. Okay, that's a very expensive, you know, opportunity. And it weighed very heavily on her mind. And we told her, if you lose the tuition for that semester, you're going to have to pay it back. And what Cornell costs, it's it's a heavy load. So she's taken her responsibility extremely seriously. But their experience has been good and hopefully that they'll be able to have more onsite teaching, you know, the in the coming semester. Most of the schools in in Boston have followed the same format. In truth effect, the collaborative between Harvard and Cambridge, Harvard and MIT have set up a corporation to actually do testing within schools. And it's been so successful that they're extending it to the employers in Boston. So it can be done and we we can make schools safe and we can keep colleges open. We can keep high schools open, depending on the degree of necessary testing. But this is ahead of us in the next six months as to whether we're going to have to put it in place in in Yorktown and the surrounding districts. We're very.
Of course, all of that comes with a big price.
Not necessarily, and and that's that's the whole point. We can partner with outside agency and we can get more sophisticated testing. The governor has offered to give us antigen testing that we can do onsite for free. We have to provide the personnel to run the test with, train them. And that's another possibility. And that would cost perhaps additional personnel, but not many. And it can be done, it's being done right as we speak in Osning. Yonkers has has can has completed their evaluation. And by the way, in Yonkers, where I would expect the infectivity rate to be higher, it was extremely low in that school district. It proving the point that it's safer to be in school than to not be in school. As long as we can keep the outside parties to a lower. So it can be done if if necessary. And particularly if we see our infectivity rates start to increase within the school or get extremely high in the community. It it's it's a feasible, you know, proposition. And I I am working with Dr. Hatter on this in in case we we have to enforce this type of a testing policy, you know, by ordinance of the governor. Did that answer your question about testing?
Yes, thank you.
Not TMI.
Peter, Cheryl, did you have questions?
Yeah, I have a a question. Dr. Casaro, thank you for being with us tonight and for taking such great care of our school community. My question is, as we, and and a lot of this is like in preparation to staffing and anticipation of what's to come. You know, the consensus is that, and from what we saw over Thanksgiving, is that over the next break, we're we're going to see either a continuum from what happened over Thanksgiving or another spike. And we talk about, you know, the week after and, you know, what's going to happen there. Is that a finite time period after that time? Because it just seems like, if you think about it, this will just keep on spreading. It's sort of like saying, and they told two friends and they told two friends and so on and so on. It seems like that's how it spreads. So I know there's never going to be a time where we can really take a, you know, a sigh of relief. But at what point, because even though maybe some of the partying has subsided from the holidays, people may still be getting together and thereafter, we're still confined inside. I'm talking about the outside because I do agree that our schools are very safe. But are we ever going to really be able to quantify that week or two? It will be two weeks after the holidays? Or is it sort of a wait and see? We're going to have to see what what's going to happen? Or have they been able to protect that?
Okay, let me let me just very simply ask your, answer your question. We'll see a spike within within the first and second week after the holiday. The first spike will will occur after Christmas and the second will be after New Year's. I mean, those are the two celebration periods where people get together. It usually takes five to 10 days for disease to start showing after the exposure. So if we take Christmas, you you'll see, you you'll see infections in that first week. And if you're looking at New Year's, you'll see exposure into the second week. So it it is a, there is a finite period that we can, we can say that disease is going to show. The advantage of of being virtual during that timeframe is that we can identify infection, not allowing those infected individuals to come into school, either staff or or students. And that minimizes the number of people, the the contacts of an infected person, those contacts from having to be quarantined. If we can, if we can minimize the amount of contacts that we have to quarantine, we can keep the schools open after that period of time. So I I've encouraged and I've gotten at least six of my districts on board with this recommendation is to consider one or two weeks after the holiday to go virtual, allowing the the situation to itself wo- work itself out. And then we can then, we can then take people who are are well, bring them back into school after that time. So it is, it is finite. But disease does spread exponentially. And you're absolutely correct. And what we're trying to do is to minimize the total extent of the spread.
I understand. Thank you.
Well, ba- based on that scenario, shouldn't we be seeing a decrease now after that spike from Thanksgiving?
No, it's still going. It it's it's it it's, you know, the timeframe after exposure is up to 14 days. So 14 days from Thanksgiving is when that that grouping of people who become infected will will show, will show themselves. Once you get beyond that, the the spread is anybody who has been in contact with an infected person. So it's it's a longitudinal progression. But but the spike is showing itself this week. And I've had some of the most serious cases developed today alone. So it it's happening.
Then carrying that forward to Christmas and New Year's, the after those two or three weeks, if you shut the schools and and didn't and shut them down, the idea is that you would not have the contact that you normally would, thus, living through the incubation period and less people could become infected. Is that the?
That's essentially the point that I'm making. Let let me give an example so we can, we can look at this longitudinally. If we have one infected student coming back into a school, particularly in a high school, it roughly works out that that one individual will be in contact with about 120 individuals within the school. So each individual case within a high school, I've had to quarantine upwards of 120 or more people. If we were to keep that one infected individual out of the school, those 120 people that he was in contact with would not have been necessarily exposed. So we wouldn't have to quarantine them in addition. So by closing the school, going virtual for one or preferably two weeks, depending on what the district decides, we're going to minimize the number of youngsters and and staff who have been exposed and minimize the amount of quarantining that's necessary. This is why when you, when we, you hear Dr. Had or say that we have to close the school for a day or two, it's because we have to figure out who they've been exposed to, that one individual. And in high school, because they they float right through the school, it usually averages over 120 people of exposure.
But that, but that's assuming that during those two weeks, the ones who were irresponsible and and went out and and did what they were doing are going to, are basically going to maintain some sort of confinement not to continue that that spread.
I I I agree. I agree with the point that you're making, that it'll be lesser than coming in and exposing 120 people. Maybe they'll expose 10, okay, and we'll deal with that. It it's different than exposing 120, then go home and expose elderly parents who will then acquire more severe level of disease.
So Doc, if we can just play through this idea of a week versus two weeks, because families, especially at the earlier elementary grades, where childcare is is, the school is just part of that plan. I'm sure they have before care and after care. But the school is a big part of that for people specifically with elementary school age children. So this week, two week after the the holiday recess concludes is 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 a pretty big deal and a lot of factors to be considered. And I'm wondering, so if if we anticipate that people will gather on the evening of December 31st in in celebration of the new year? So we have January 1st, 2nd, 3rd, 4th, 5th, 6th, 7th, 8th, 9th, 10th. Schools, if we went remote that first week after the 4th, schools are set to reopen on January 11th, which theoretically is 11 days after potential exposure. In your experience, have you found that the vast majority of cases have presented themselves within the first 10 days? Or would you recommend that second week to get us out of the 14 day quarant? I guess that week versus two weeks does make a big deal. I'm sure one week is better than no weeks, two weeks might be better than one week and and where's the balance, I guess?
The the balance is, you're absolutely correct. It's the first 10 days that we're at the highest risk. So that the first week would be very highly recommended, the second week would be optional. And I I could say unequivocally that the elementary schools up to K 5 should just be one week. I'm I'm more concerned about the middle and high school in in those exposures and particularly the high school.
So so can I, can I introduce? So circling back to, and I think you were just leading up to what I was going to ask you, Dr. Casaro. At the beginning, you had said, I think if I understood you right, that the spread is more likely in the older kids, the high potentially the middle schoolers. And the in-person learning is really more crucial for the younger children.
That's correct.
And we're hearing the childcare issues are are of serious consideration for the younger children. Could you, could you consider it a recommendation to try the best we can to keep our K through 5 buildings open after the holidays and shut down middle school and high school?
If you could promise me that your staff will also follow good guidance in those previous two weeks, then it wouldn't be an issue. Okay, and that's that's the the hard issue is if if we, if we have the adults in the room who are going to congregate. It's the staffing issue that we're really talking about. It's not the infectivity in the students per se. And staffing becomes the issue of whether you're able to keep the school open or not. And that's what Dr. Hatter and I have to soul search every time we hear of someone being positive. What is the impact on that particular grade level or that particular school? So if we could guarantee that the staff would also follow these guidelines, which which is admittedly difficult, then we then we can keep those schools open, yeah.
It goes to behaviors. Right back to behaviors every single time.
Look, I I I live in the real world and it's it's entirely understandable that people want to, you know, get together. It it's the most difficult thing in my life to know that this this coming holiday, I won't be able to see any of my grandchildren. I won't be able to see my two stepdaughters who are away. I won't be able to see my own children. And yes, we can have Zoom meetings like this and they're great. But it's it's very difficult. It's extremely difficult. And then you have a certain percentage of the population who are saying, it's not going to happen to me. I mean, I I'm good, I'm a good athletic person and I can get through this and I've got good immunity and I never get sick. No one is is really immune. And until the entire population buys into this concept that we have to wear a mask and practice social distancing, then it doesn't work. Now, it will work if you're wearing a mask and if you're practicing social distancing, you've got a good chance that you will not get disease. But if, unless the entire population buys into this, it, there's going to be infective spread. And it's it's sad and I agree with you.
Well, I I I I just came, came off of quarantine because I had, I took my son to move to Georgia. So I did the right thing and I tested negative three times before I left my house. After, you know, seven days, because that's the right thing to do. It's not about me, it's about other people. And that's, I guess, what I'm trying to get people to understand is to keep the schools open. We need people to be compliant all over the place.
You're you're not going to develop compliance unless you're, like myself, have something to do with the medical profession. And my my coming to terms with this was after a webinar in which the the people who run the ICU at Northern Westchester Hospital spoke of their in-hospital experience. And they gave a couple of statistics that were just sobering. One was that 82% of all of their ICU patients went on respirators, 82%. And then of of those that were on respirators, only about 12% actually got off the respirators. And that was the statistic that scared me. I mean, it frightened me so much that I had to have a conversation with my wife in terms of what would happen with me if I was placed on a respirator and got infected. And my and my wife said, I won't, I'm not going to deal with this until you speak to your own children. So I had to call my kids and say, this is what I want in case I get on a respirator. I do not want to be resuscitated. Now, this is my personal experience, having listened to the people who are actually caring for the people within an ICU. It's that horrific. This is way beyond anything that you've ever experienced in your whole life or even what I've experienced in my whole life. It's Lisa calling me. So I I've gotten religion and I, and again, I've I've taken this extremely seriously. But you you have to have that type of exposure to understand why I'm I'm taking the time to speak to you all and I I do with each of the districts. This is a really serious problem. We can get through it. And I want to be one of the people who in September can celebrate with my family. This is my goal.
Thank you, and I want to, I want to thank you for your leadership through this. I don't think that this district would have been where it is today if you hadn't been guiding us. And so I truly appreciate all of your expertise and your guidance and and the way you've partnered with Dr. Hatter and Mrs. O'Shea and Tom Cole in order for us to stay open. So I really do thank you for that.
Thank you, Doc.
You're very welcome.
Thanks, Doctor. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good night.
Thank you.
And that concludes my report, Charlie.
Okay. Okay. We're going to go under personnel. A recommendation of the superintendent, the following resolutions be approved. You resolve that the Board of Education authorize the superintendent to establish the following rates of pay for staff not under Department of Labor overtime rules for additional duties. Athletic supervision, home away games, home games at $70, $75 a game. Athletic supervision for away games at $90 a game. Athletic supervision at tournaments at $37.50 an hour and proctors at $35 an hour.
Tomo.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Upon recommendation of the superintendent, a motion that the following be approved under certified personnel. We have appointments, part-time appointments, regular substitutes, tenure appointments, extra compensation, other compensation for extra duty. Duty, we have our co-curriculars at the high school and the middle school, an unpaid leave of absence and two resignation. an unpaid leave of absence and two resignations under classified personnel. We have civil service appointments, unpaid leave of absence, additions to the substitute list and resignations.
Tomo.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I have a motion to approve the budget transfers as listed below.
Tomo.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Emotion to approve the amendment number one to the Building Star Service Agreement with Yorktown Central School District for Cleaning Services at French Hill School for the 2021 school year in an amount of $1,625 per month.
Tomo.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Allowance disbursement, emotional accept the following allowance disbursement and change order from J&amp;M Heating and Air Conditioning for the 2020 Capital Reserve Projects. We have an allowance disbursement in the amount of $5,000 and we have a change order deduct in the amount of $5,000, nets to zero.
Tomo.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Be resolved that the Board of Education authorizes the Board President to execute an agreement with MAT Bus Corp that will continue their contractual relationship for the district for student transportation services for the next three years.
Tomo.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Be resolved that the Board hereby authorizes its school attorney Shaw Pearl-Sinay and Lambert to represent the district in appeal of a appeal number 21450 pending before the Commissioner of Education of the State of New York pursuant to the law firm's retainer agreement with the district.
Tomo.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Emotion to arrange the following placements as of December 7, 2020.
Tomo.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
A motion to approve the following contracts. We have the Beacon City School District, the Carmel Central School District, North Salem Central School District, Lakewood Central School District and Greenberg Graham Union Free School District.
Tomo.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Emotion to approve the following gifts, grants and donations with gratitude. Yorktown High School Athletics, $7,467.98 from the parents of the 2019-20 ice hockey teams to offset the cost for the ice hockey.
Tomo.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We have public comment. Is there anybody wishing to speak? With that?
I didn't receive anything for non-agenda.
Okay, so we are up to board comments. Mike? Besides, happy birthday to Mike.
Thank you, everyone.
Happy birthday, Mike.
Thanks. I'm good.
Lisa?
No, thank you, Dr. Hatter and team for everything.
Rashmi?
Thank you, I'm good.
Cheryl?
I'm good, thank you.
Hey?
I'm good.
I'm good too. Dr. Hatter, I really thank you for bringing Dr. Soro on to help guide us and the community. It was extremely helpful to everybody to have him on, so thank you very much. Ron, Lisa, Tom, anything? Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Good night, everyone.
Happy birthday, Mike. Good night, everyone.
Thanks, everyone.